All right, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. All board members are present. We have numbers of our advisory budget committee here. The date and location of the next board meeting is November 12th at Belmont Elementary School. So we don't need next date, correct? First up is public communication correspondence. Budget work session.
Handled out some of my information to the board in the board meetings considered this evening, this conversation. The top section is titled budget adjustments since '10-3, those are what we went over on our last meeting, where we're going to add in another $156,000 into the proposed budget that you're working out of. Since then, providing a list of potential other adjustments that the board might want to consider. These are based on a conversation we had in our last meeting, involves some other things that Debbie and I found in the budget that we could potentially take out. So we started talking about the Canterbury Elementary School teacher vacancy and potentially not filling that. That's $72,266. Dropping the administrators and specialists from 3.2 to a 2.5% increase. That comes close to $19,000, a little over $12,000. In your proposed budget, we add a subpay increase to $150 a day. Dropping that to $125 a day would be able to reduce the budget by a little over $40,000. And then we propose a position adjustment for our current payroll and feds coordinator position. We're taking that out as well for $5,383. And then the PSAT testing for our high school for freshmen, sophomore, junior. This requires assessment unless parents decide to opt out. Taking that out, $7,000. The retire rate that we had in our last meeting for the separation, we did not take out the longevity. Well, we presented this to you at the last meeting, so longevity, we had to move that, that's $10,581. And then if the board decides not to fill the CES teacher vacancy, which would be directed towards fifth grade for next year specifically, we wouldn't need supplies for them, just a little over $1,200. So with making those potential cuts, be able to reduce the budget by $156,911. And that brings you basically right to where the original proposed budget that we presented to you in our first meeting, brings that to a subtotal increase of 1.68%. Just a little shy of what was the original proposal, proposed budget was. And then your total budget goes adjustments of 1.98%. So bottom line, we ended up adding $156,000. Potential reductions since our last meeting, $156,000. Bringing you right back to where your proposed budget was originally presented to you the first time. Any questions on any of those items?
Questions?
Late amount of discussion.
Realistically increased, possibly increased slightly. That number is important.
I'm not sure what people will use to make their decisions as to whether they're going to stay or not. That 2.5 is based on the cost of living adjustment for 2025. Originally added a 3.2, which was the cost of living adjustment for 2024.
Yeah, I think that's sort of a first one right now. Well, then, whoops. Lots of supplies. I mean, as I understood it, some of these students won't go to Belmont Elementary School next year. Maybe not all of them, I don't know. Aren't you still going to be basically consuming a lot of supplies to build the student trade?
No, we're comfortable taking the majority of that line in $1,200 as the consumables for we adopt the new legislative program, we do wisdom. So we wouldn't need the fifth grade unit of consumables.
Then on the ESA, you mentioned the list that knocks out is required. We have to require. It's often not clear what needs to be, so it didn't set back the dollars on. You got some.
They would be, they're not required from the state, they'll be required from our district. Meaning that we would have standardized tests for nine, 10, 11 graders, which is currently not happening.
So this would drop it all together?
No, they still, they still take the PSATs, but not for all grades. And we are required to administer the SATs, which is the state assessment.
Yeah, okay. So this is basically the drop, nine, 10? Nine, 10?
And 11, yes.
11.
Or we currently have students that can opt to take the PSAT. And we have four PSATs.
Do you have any sense with those, if the PSAT helps, I want to be better on the test, take a little bit of proposals?
I would think so, it's test prep. It's a proposal for the money to administer for all students, all three years. So there's no opinion of standardized testing high school students, which is basically a test prep at that point.
So the board, I'm just asking a question, companies can't always not be, others will quit.
So I'm interested in the CES teacher vacancy. If we remove it from the budget this year, does that mean that it is not in the budget for next year? Am I concerned that we can, I hope it's like difficult to get it back.
That's the board has to decide that next year, when they put their budgets together.
I know that this year's more very class, there's small, it's tiny. But the third grade classes, 20, the second grade classes, 24, I believe wanted to work, we've got very large classes that and taking that option away from the third grade, I do not know that that would be well received. I just wanted to put that out there and make sure that, you know, if we take it out, we can put it back.
I also want to see it as, I see it as moving in my culture because we're not using it. However, we don't know what next year's going to be like. So we may not, we have to add that in, but we can still have grades, it's felt, we're not in charge of this group of people. We don't know besides the key, you are in the past. We have two departments right now, right? Right, but what I'm saying is next year, we're going to have a class of 15, you know, which means we're going to need 20 teachers. That's, just so you know, that's why I'm, I'm not seeing it as moving.
Okay, I just, that's just something that I kind of wanted to talk about and have out there so that it is, you know, on the record.
I agree.
That's why we titled it CES teacher vacancy. But past for next year, it's just a fifth grade. We're looking at three classes, they get out as nine families of elementary schools.
What happens to the last one?
We would have to let them know that elementary school is the option.
I don't know where I'll be getting shit about. One concern I would have is, so I'll state that. I don't favor cutting the vacancy because I think it's a bad budget to fund a position that we've known has you done. But I do think we run into the question next year, what's the magic number for depressing that position back? Is it one student? Are it five students? Is it 10 students? I mean, I do think that's a question that could come up. I feel like I don't want to have an answer to that one because. I mean, I think, you know, looking at class sizes, you know, there are schools that also have classes of young. If we have nine, the next year, stay, are we going to add a teacher for nine students? I don't know. Why don't, I think that's a show on my own. Just something.
So I apologize if I wasn't here last week, but thanks to Andrew's great video, I was actually able to listen in on your deliberations. And I, my, my sort of slightly removed takeaway was that everyone was working really hard after what made you do it. One of my former seniors used to call majoring in the minors. Right, because we're sitting here with a $28,900 budget, talking about $156,000 of incremental investment. I think to Jay's point earlier, I would just want to make sure that cutting the things that you want to cut to bring it back to the original proposal, which by the way is really good options, right? It's an effort we need to make on behalf of our faculty. But make sure it's stuff that actually is meaningful and that you really want to cut, you know, that you don't want to put back. $156,000 is 10 cents on Canterbury staff. So it's nice, but it's not getting you back to where you were. So I would say, you know, just make sure. And then my follow-up question, because I'm not coming from a town that lives with S P 2. If you take out the teacher position and you end up with the faultless thing, and then you need a teacher, where do you find this funding to the teacher?
That's always a problem here, probably you have to deal with people who want to go to the public.
Some people, people might go through the faultless, and in which case you have to scramble your, you know, what you can do. You know, the other thing is you, even if it's vacant and you carry your number in the budget for it, that doesn't mean you're expensive, right? If it stays vacant all year, you're not going to raise that for taxation, so.
Can I answer your question now? Please. If you have the fault, you find a position out of all those positions that you could potentially opt to add that position.
That's fine. Yeah, okay, so it's just, you know, one of the things we do on the town budgeting is really try to look hard at need to have versus nice to have. You know, and if there are things in the budget that fall into the nice to have category, then those should be on the table. If there are things that are in the need to have category, then I would suggest that the board leave them because we're not solving the tax problem. And I don't have anywhere near the expertise to figure out what to put at a state, sorry.
So you didn't have to state, I'm just, what do you mean by the tax problem?
Well, clearly we have a healthy hike in property taxes that's coming for December, certainly for Canterbury. I've got to assume Belmont's got something similar. So I call that, I call that the tax problem because I anticipate you're feeling frustrated over that. And in particular, the way that the invisible budget cycle works, the problem is going to hit people. Anyone whose taxes are, are desperate by the mortgage company is going to have a payment adjustment. It's going to hit their money. And so trying to avoid the December taxable spike is almost good to do it.
We can leave the position on the vote with basically the placeholder of a dollar to make sure the position doesn't go away. And then if the need is there, you know, then we, you know, then we fund the position that it won't. We wouldn't have to jump through the hoop of bringing the position back. But I don't think that's an overly difficult, you know, thing either to bring the position back.
So the funding a dollar, that's if you were having a separate line, is in your budget, a dollar in there so that you could finish it? Right, same for salary, salary is part of the overall salary line. So you wouldn't see that dollar that's in there?
Got it.
And it's more the function, like truant officer, we never know if we're going to need one. So the budget, a dollar is the function.
That allows you to do money around inside.
I did talk to a couple of parents about this in anticipation of this discussion. And one of the things that I picked up is that, and these were parents of younger kids that would be coming eventually, is their older kids were able to attend the parade here and they enjoyed that. They didn't want to deal with the younger kid having to deal with the bus issue. That was a huge one for them. So I know that we talk about how like it's going to be two years in a row that there's not enough kids, but we don't know what's coming after that. And it is something that's been provided for younger than that option, and I don't want to take that away. But I also agree, like, it's hard if it's not filling, but to boss point, if we know we're not going to fill it, we don't raise the money.
I've got a question on the PSATs. So if there was a freshman or sophomore that wanted to take PSAT, is that option available? Or are we just taking that, taking that off the table for, or I guess taking PSATs off the table here?
That would be an option on the other side.
Okay.
Which is how it is now.
Currently, got it.
Doesn't change. Yes.
So we don't have the, or any section of charge. We can't really see what's the distribution between Canterbury and Belmont Elementary School. But I know that they have a whole lot more students than we do in Canterbury. Are we willing to look at that aspect of mine, some of those kids come to Canterbury? So that maybe somewhere in there, you can, maybe they don't need a position anymore that we can easily save on there between salaries and benefits?
I'm not able to.
We let it up.
Yeah, I know, I know, it's not common. Most people do not know about it, you know, it's not advertised. I mean, currently we have how many here in Canterbury? 83 people? 83 students or?
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two students? In Canterbury and Belmont Elementary has many?
A little over 350.
350 students, I think that's the big disparity between the, how many students are shopping up to build them compared to here in Canterbury. I know their staff there has to be at a certain level because of it. But if we were to bring students from over there to here, okay, that's probably important people. But if letting people know that the opportunity is available, we can work out that maybe we can reduce staff in there just by allowing some good portion to come over here.
Would you bus them? Because right now we don't bus them.
Yeah, because we is part of a bus transportation.
Well, you have to add a bus, right?
I mean, I'm not sure if you try to bus, it's their rotation when you're busing, right?
So what we currently do is if we have a Belmont family that wants to come to Canterbury, we ask the family to bring that student.
I'm sorry.
If we have a Belmont family that wants to attend Canterbury, we ask the mayor to bring that student to the closest Canterbury stop on the Belmont border as possible. We transport it as a regular Canterbury run. Prepare to go and give that student up at their home in Belmont and transporting them to Canterbury. So we do use, you have that option now. Try to figure out the cost savings though.
I mean, we do have only 90, we have a whole building here with staff, 93 students only. We have 30 and something over there.
Certainly has to be the desire of the family to make that additional drive. I mean, there are cars in Belmont that are 30 minutes from Canterbury Elementary. So I mean, it's, it has to be the desire of the family to do that.
But I think there's probably a good portion of people that don't even realize that they basically come over here.
If I'm hearing this right, we're saying if we advertise it better, that more kids might want to come here.
Yeah, maybe there's some incentive or something.
I don't, I don't think it's a cost savings as much as any allocation would be.
And how much would it be for then an annual plus to pick up extra, each student to come over here?
Oh, so, uh, contract us for what each individual plus costs us, that's a good line.
I mean, if that plus, that one plus adds the ride and if maybe we lose two positions, three positions in Belmont.
So if we have more students that are going to go to attend Canterbury Elementary School, we don't need to shift the resources because we need a teacher here in order to.
Well, we do have a passion, but only 10 students or very small numbers compared to Belmont.
Yeah, your kindergarten, your first grade here specifically, but other than that, your second and third grade is over 20.
The other thing is though with the busing, it also makes it exceptional. If we were to shift around the busing routes, it makes it really, really long for some very small children. Like very young children. So I don't, I don't know. That's something that we can certainly look at, but I think.
It would be, there would be some really long bus rides. Currently, we have Belmont students that ride buses from Belmont Conyers to Belmont Elementary School that are close to an hour. So that's on the Maconia side of Belmont. So you would have to open that up to all families and trying to transport a student from the Maconia side of Belmont to Canterbury Elementary School would be well over an hour.
Which is, for an elementary age child, is unfair.
That's right.
Which is one of the reasons that the parents I talked to want to.
I, I want to consider that I was not suggesting we cut the grade. Because both of my children would be created in Canterbury and I would want that option still. So I, to me, it's about whether we're budgeting for this other teacher. Which to me, if it happens next year, it's a grade again. But I do not believe we should have a grade. That's what, to me, another discussion, though, I get what you're all saying.
What do you all think about, what do you think about Mark's idea?
Well, he said it wasn't, it wasn't appropriate.
Which was.
Correct, but that's a function. So what Mark is suggesting is leave a dollar in for the teaching position. And that falls under the 1100 function. We don't need to leave a dollar in, we already have the 1100 function. And that's where the majority of our staff is. What I was saying as far as truant officer, the only thing in that function would be a truant officer. We don't hire a truant officer, but if something happened and we needed to, we wouldn't be able to unless we had a dollar in that function.
So why can't it be?
It doesn't need to be because we already have the 1100s in there. They could still, if they wanted to authorize payment out of that function, because there's already money in there.
So the only thing I'm thinking about, never mind in particular. But when you have that some close student enrollment in a way, if you're skeptical, you should keep the budget. I think a lot of the need for budgeting to improve actually, it might be just one part of the year. So I think in a broader discussion, how do you deal with the head some close students in some areas that may not need a position? Off you go with this.
So what we tend to do, particularly if we need to add a position, which has happened in the past with kindergarten, we had kindergarten enrollment higher than we anticipated. And we want to keep class sizes down. I would come to the board and say that we needed additional kindergarten teacher. And I would, we'd look for those monies in the budget without increasing it, increasing the budget, but working within the budget to bring that teacher, that new position in. Again, it's a bottom line budget, there's going to be savings somewhere. Therefore, if we can hire an additional teacher that was not anticipated, then we look for our savings in the budget to fund that position.
So if you presented a budget, didn't say it's a position, it's just you didn't have enough surprise for the 21, we're talking 25, 26. So what you're going to be able to, you know, you think, dice are rolling, they were, it'll be only making out of the position. It's a little bit here.
I think with this position specifically, the need is not going to be there for this particular position. So to carry a vacancy knowing that it would be left vacant, to me, is an appropriate budget. I don't see that, and I also don't see that as being transparent with the community by saying, specifically say, how do you come up with the $72,000?
I'm honestly, if you're talking, I'm back to, you know, you want to rival the parents who are cutting the position. They're over the back, you know, I think that's what we're deciding.
Please note that that's not something I'm saying either, because it's next year's budget, so.
I do think it speaks to though what Sean was saying on the other side, which is what's the threshold for adding? So I mean, I understand where that would be the case.
We were talking about an issue that you're on the road.
Right. But even if you do, because.
So what you're losing here is the decision not to fund this vacancy and figure out and say, yeah, like 25, 26. Because in year 26, half the budget will be for the first half of year 26, by the end of person. And if you roll it up to 26, you know what, you're going to need this position, what did you do? So my question is to you, and I think, you know, to take half of that salary, probably sincerely, whoever could counter that and say, you're not taking, you're not going anywhere, as I said, the following year, if I could ask for that number.
Nobody's complaining here and it's the default budget. So if we, if we didn't fund in the budget, this Canterbury position, right? The following year, you need to add that funding back in, which could be an increase of whatever, 72,000.
I get it, I'm guessing, you know, last year I had a point about the default budget. And I mean, that's a way to work, but the problem that's big in that default budget is that that's closely continued where they last year, it's one of the problematic that the less of them, I won't say the lower middle class, obviously is going to fight it, it's a story to stick around. So the default budget, in my mind, looking at the growth rates here, here, and I'm having a look at this detail, so I might look forward or whatever. But it seems like what's getting baked in is a code that makes you over time, it's a story to make up. And so if that's the case, then it doesn't bother me that, hey, we got to go our own way, this budget. It's a tax pair to 26, 27, we're not funding position. So if you, to keep growing the default budget, the voter don't have a chance, if possible, it will become problematic. Key is a problem.
Thoughts?
My concern is that, let's say next year, this group is sitting here again, and 13 of those 22 kids want to stay here. And it's like, well, you know, we're trying to keep costs down, and then the board says, we're not going to fund that position. That's my concern, is that once it's off, I know we say that it's easy to put it back on, but it's not that easy to put it back on.
I mean, last year, we can see the voter take out against, including the budget for the default budget. I really don't see a problem personally, from what I've seen over the last several years. If the need is there, explaining, it'll go through, and certainly it will go through the delivery session. Can't say that it'll be. So I don't know that there's a future risk. We really shouldn't default budget this year because of this decision, and next year you figure out, I need a decision.
I think, I think Randy's saying whatever that this board, makeup of this board, doesn't choose to add the position back in because it's 12 kids or 13 kids. And that's a small class size compared to Belmont that's running 20 kids per class that gets taken or is willing to come over here.
If that's the case, then collectively as a board, if they choose not to fund it. If that's the case, then the, then collectively as board, if they choose not to fund it moving, moving forward, then the board made the financial decision.
Right, I understand that.
I think you'll figure out...
Yeah, I wasn't thinking about that until someone else brought it up. It's like, well, wait a minute, like, without knowing what that threshold would be, it may be trickier to bring it back on. Or, but to your point, they can just go to the deliberative session and put it back in.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, with the bus prices and everything else, the threshold, we decide on the position, twelve, thirteen kids, it's not the best, it is, my guts tell me, I don't know. But anyway, I'm gonna come back with Michael. You know, the funding vacancy, being a hand in funding vacancy, has some path here. This is just one vacancy, it's not a good number of problems out, that philosophy, just same discussion I had with the town.
I, I concur. Funding something, putting funding in the budget, something you know you're not gonna do, doesn't actually pass the transparency test of budgeting in general. It's not a great factor to do it, you know, you're not gonna... I think your future discussions about what you do don't need for teaching positions is pretty fundamental to the school board, and something maybe you have to assess broadly. So I don't know that funding a vacant position for this year preserves it, Randy, or preserves it, how it acts in the future, if it's needed or not, that's sort of a different criteria. I also think that, you know, uh, an expensive budget that's running of, you know, one point seven to two percent increase year over year, is this pretty natural? I mean, town budgets, everything, all of our budgets tends to run on that basis. Right now, we're looking at the expense side, and it feels to me like the board's being pretty responsible about, I mean, going down with some pretty small numbers to make sure that they hold tight on the school, just to do this a good job. We haven't talked about the revenues side. So when we all sit down, the votes, they don't count me. Revenue's a massive guess. So anytime you postulate a tax rate based on an expense budget, it's a, you never know. Really, what that's gonna come down to in the end. So most people will hopefully assess the budget based on what you projected for expenses as compared to the prior year, and then will find out for real what happens when you know what the revenue is.
You know, I'm conflicted about that appointment. So the book, without, I mean, you have to plead it by the state. So I'm slowly grasping this whole revenue side, and all of your costs. For your average voter, to your point, here's the expense, here's the benefit, just give her one time notice, comes from the state or the county. I, I know the point numbers are there, but to the unedged, that's a catch. To those that aren't diverse, some of us discuss this stuff. It's not really clear. I mean, my first reaction, first two years, I didn't make it, I know it's this number, this is piece on passes. And I'd like to know why. So just something to think about, uh, is if you gave...
It requires a report, a revenue, it's something, but it's also a note.
The book was very thorough, and now, the average, I don't know, but, well, just, you understand, and this is what we think, the state, the county, versus just two number, three number to do the rest of the deal. That might, hopefully, should happen, because I don't know.
Only we have a good old fashioned school district meeting like we used to have before SP two. Make that lovely explanation. You went to people in the gym, but now you need...
So, um, I'm, I don't know how the rest of the board feels. Uh, while I don't think the SAT testing at the ninth grade level is probably appropriate, I think a lot of it's over there, um, over their head, trying to, trying to get ready for an SAT. It's probably very appropriate for, um, sophomores and juniors. So would it be appropriate to try to split that in the, uh, somewhere in the, you know, in the middle to, you know, to get that testing out there, to get the data, and then some of the performance, um, you know, targets or performance information on how to do it?
So, um, I am not a fan of standardized testing, mostly because both myself and my two children are terrible at it. Love to do this, but they're not good at it, so, and they're doing well. So, so I struggle with having a mandatory standardized testing for PSATs. I'm just, that's me personally. So I don't, I wanna know how we use the data. So I would wanna know, like, what, if, if you told me it was for test prep for SATs, that's a different conversation. But what I heard Stu Finch say was that it was for, to see how our kids are doing and where they need to target it. And I wanna know how that could help me, for me.
I would also question the validity of the data, because as a tenth grader, ninth grader, or tenth grader, a non-required test that doesn't have an impact on my future, how seriously am I gonna take that test? Therefore, analyzing data that a student might score poorly on, and that student could be extremely smart in those content areas and just not taking the test seriously, because what's the impact on them specifically? We see that with standardized testing now. So for our high school students that are focused on getting course credit in order to graduate with their diploma, that's their focus when they get into high school. Not necessarily taking a standardized test that's gonna provide a data point that doesn't necessarily show their skill set or knowledge base.
Well, and also, that test is designed for a certain grade level, and that's had a certain set of academics that they would look for, yeah, correct?
Totally agree.
Right, I mean, that, that's why I said, I mean, I think it's, it's way beyond freshman. A freshman would go and take that test and say, what in the world am I looking at? But by the time you hit, you know, tenth grade, you're, you're starting to, you know, get a lot of those skill sets, and, you know, start to be able to take one of those, those, the PSAT.
PSAT.
Uh, tests and say, here, here's my strengths, here's my weaknesses. Uh, but, I mean, I think it would be used for both, you know, really, it'd be used for the individual on, um, you know, as far as SAT prep, and can be used as a, as a school for benchmarks.
Other thoughts?
So are you saying not to fund PSATs at some point, or just you didn't agree with collecting the data or having abroad? I'm trying to understand.
So for me, because Mark had said, what do, what do people think about splitting it down the middle and coming as paid for, um, testing in sophomore junior year? I would wanna know what it's showing and how we're gonna use it, because I'm not sure what it's benchmarking for. That's all. Um, so I was just throwing that out there, because I think on the here.
I was giving a slight... The data was an interesting point that Stu Finch brought up, but, um, I, I, for such a small amount of money, the school degree will want to pay for those that wanna take it. They're gonna be on a college track. I'm a hundred percent for it. As a kid, I had to take my own test. And, uh, third was what got me into college, it's really a good thing. It was only if my daddy would take me to third, and I took to third, so I kind of, like, even available to kids.
Uh, one other question that I have is that payroll and benefits coordinator position adjustment, will that individual still be asked to do that without the pay increase?
Uh, no.
Just wanna make sure that was paid appropriately for their time.
So what does that mean?
No, uh, so our current position, just to, you might have seen the posting, posting for that position, our current employee, unfortunately, is retiring, he's very happy for those. To the level of the work that she does specifically, that's not what we're entitled for. So I feel that we need to define with keeping the title of a payroll clerk, benefits coordinator position compared to those additional responsibilities will be able to function just fine.
So those additional responsibilities, that's spread out a little bit?
No.
Where do they go?
Right? Sorry, Michael, where do they go?
In the line.
Michael.
Sure, they're paying me over greatly.
Absolutely.
But back to Mark's point around the PSATs, like, what do people, I mean, change?
Well, or even an option of, and I don't know how we would fund it, you know, if students want to take it, you know, they, they could.
Right. Cause right now, parents pay for it.
Yep. I don't know how much it is.
Two things. One, if we're not using the information, because we're just offering it to whoever wants to take it, why is it on us to pay for it? And then secondly, and this is not a budget discussion per se, but if we don't wanna offer the PSAT to pay for it, or if it's not, that's fine, though. I still feel like we don't have a way to benchmark our high school. How we do it. And I don't feel like we have. I don't know if it's the percentage of your kids that pass classes versus fail classes. I don't know. It's, shouldn't we have a way of saying, hey, in that region, in this state, our high school is one of the best? I don't have...
I was even saying three points that you could focus on, particularly for the success of high school. One is your pass fail rate. Look at that, the first semester each year, um, as well as the end of each year. Look at your drop out rate, your graduation rate, all that's tied in, as well as the success of our students coming out of the school district. And how many students are going into four-year programs? How many students are going into two-year programs? How many students are going to the workforce? Knowing those percentages and making sure those percentages are stable, so there isn't a subgroup of students that are coming out of high school without a goal in mind in achieving that goal, then you lose these those for high school.
I feel like if we, if we're, we are not carrying students that are crushing sophomore years, that's not the impact that you need. I don't have, benchmark those early years other than pass failure.
So, uh, that's an important discussion.
Not, not why.
No, but it is budget if it relates to wanting to use the PSAT as a benchmark.
I agree with Mark.
Well, I would, to me, if, if the board decides somehow you want to fund this evaluation, and I don't think the PSA is good tool for that. If the board decides it's big enough, question, remember question, with money, and you can figure out who, who would do an assessment.
Or what assessment?
Or what you're supposed to do. You don't have to decide it right now, but, and you might find a number of taxpayers who'd actually jump on that. Are you gonna possibly?
Yeah.
No, I mean, I, I agree with Sean. I mean, I, how do we, we, we need to be able to start assessing our, our, our students, knowing where they're at, what their strengths are, what their weaknesses are. Um, I mean, the fact that we have different districts have the ability to have different competencies for the exact same class from Pittsburgh to Nashville, I think it's hard to, to determine a student's success just based on, on whether or not they pass class or, or drop a grade. You know, I've worked at, at, at a high school that took their, uh, their graduation rate and, you know, held, held students' hands all the way, you know, all, all the way to the end, and there were a lot of students that should not have graduated. Uh, so I don't, I don't feel that that's necessarily a tell-all either.
And that's fine, you're just trying to keep us on budget, so with on the budget, money discussion.
So, okay, one last remark, I'm not sure I let me say, it's not a good way to benchmark what's going on in high school. I wish I should pay for it.
Other thoughts?
I'm not in favor. I mean, it's, it's a ton of money, but I'm not in favor of giving it there. I'm definitely not paying, especially since it's, I mean, I know it's not that, but even SATs, nothing required right now. So the PSAT to get ready for the SAT, which it turns necessarily into a EDA. I think the students that want to take it will take it regardless of...
Do you think the PSATs? Sorry. Paying the PSATs?
You're going to pay for the test.
But it's a state, it's a government.
State position.
So that should, you're gonna pay for the PSAT to get that sort of...
Yeah.
Somehow, and that cost, like, for speaking to their test.
No, so, so we did have that, um, through, through buses, students, basically, who were in college, so all of them take, often, at this, like, the line, you know, the process of...
If you want to retake it, you can take it. Yeah, if you want to retake it.
You want to retake it.
Pay it.
Uh, I should, I got to take it, well, but if you want, if you're placing a payment for it, it's... It's changed, state added, it's a lot of barriers, also to consider on states.
Okay. Number one, where? Other questions, as we want? If it gets down to also, what do we, what do we want our numbers to be? We don't have health insurance, personal numbers yet, for...
A fault budget, what's the timeline of that?
So I started working with that. Part of that is gonna depend on the health insurance, because that impacts, our proposal versus what the default budget would be, so I think that's wrong.
Is insurance covered?
So they say we can, we can have it by November fifteen. They try to get it to us, um, a week sooner. We have a meeting this coming Friday for school care, um, and then she tries to get information out of us.
But you, this procedure, who shows annual...
Correct, because they sent out...
Is that part of the highest sale, relevant to the board, and not representative, that's every time.
So, yes, so what they told me originally said to estimate a ten percent increase, then I got an email that said, estimate a fifteen percent increase. So I went through, calculated, if we get a fifteen percent increase, what does that impact to the budget?
So I'm interpreting what you're saying is, it shouldn't be the, maybe, one surprise, um, based on this, you know, a little fifteen percent, or a hundred percent, but we're not thinking it's a good shot.
Um, I don't think there's going to be, yeah, I don't think so. Um, they did send out a notice that they're thinking there will be no district that will give more than a nineteen percent increase.
So it seems to be the really...
So... Yeah, we won't have a revenue information from the state until November fifteen. Yeah, they don't release that early.
And I would just say from other aspects, companies purchasing health insurance, fifteen percent, the answer feels like a safe and reasonable number in planning a budget. And I probably suspect that that's where your company, private healthcare plans, throw fifteen, sixteen percent jump in. I have some questions about insurance email, but my impression is we're in the middle of a current contract. It's probably moot even talking about it, right? Like, I was thinking about like, the choice plan, and what are the benefits and the negatives. I, I think the presentation's off, like, from other district, I'll change the... Why are we talking about that? But then I also realizing that we did, can't do anything right now.
So we do talk about it every time we have negotiations. It's an area that the, um, so the teachers have one set of plans, and they've never been interested in discussing moving off of that plan. There is talk from the health insurance company that that plan may be sunset at some point. Um, and if that does happen, then the teachers won't have a choice but to, um, they won't, they won't, they sunset that plan. But that's, again, nothing finalized during the discussions of that.
Well, we can have that conversation for those that are not in the CBA.
So, the ones who are not in the CBA are on the school choice plan, the yellow choice plan. That is the less expensive plan, and that move was done years ago.
Oh, right.
So, only, only the teachers are on the green or red plan.
Okay, but this yellow plan you're talking about, is this an HMO or is this a choice? Or is it, like, I don't know the difference between all different types.
So, so the HMO is more of, um, what they used to call like catalog type plans, because of the different deductibles and stuff. Um, the yellow is a consumer-driven plan. That is, so that's why it's a less expensive plan. Um, so you know going in, these are your deductibles, you're going to pay these deductibles, and they're higher than they'd be in an HMO plan. So all of the support staff administrators and specialists are on the school care, um, consumer-driven plan.
So, the only thing we need for health insurance that we put into the budget was increasing support staff.
Right, contribution towards support staff.
Which was a recruitment intention.
Correct.
Which added. Sixty-three thousand? Well, it's sixty-three here, but that was at 10% usually. Right? Yeah. Sixty-three, but that was at 10%, so it'd be.
It would, yeah, it would change.
So say for health insurance, that's. All you're getting.
And a lot of districts are addressing the health insurance contribution as a way to attract.
Right.
For support staff.
Correct. Um, so our staff vacancies right now, I, we have some teaching positions vacant. What's the impact of us not having them in town? So I think there's a, there's English teacher at the.
Middle school.
Something at, something at the high school.
Nice.
Is there any other, and you know the schools that are homeless, we talked about that.
Kindergarten teacher at V E S.
Yeah.
And case managers at V E S, B N S and V H S. So the impact is, uh, the English teacher at the middle school is being covered by our library specialist who, um, has the potential to teach at that level in that content area. The library is being covered by the library assistant, all that's being covered by a book library specialist. So that's how that's being covered. The case, case manager vacancies, since those positions are vacant in those three schools, the current case manager specialist teachers have a larger caseload. So, um, that's the impact on not having those positions filled. And then the kindergarten position at V E S, literally, that max class sizes, we have class, kindergarten class sizes at V E S at around eighteen. So those are those impacts, not being able to fill those vacancies.
And the science.
Science, we're not able to offer specific courses in that circulation area for this first semester, but we're hoping we have a candidate for the second, starting second semester.
And what do you mean by certain, because we heard there was robotics offered, so like, what could we?
Physics and chemistry.
Couldn't offer that.
Specifically chemistry.
I'm sorry, does that, does that mean we don't have a staff?
We have a science teacher vacancy. That teacher, that position, um, was hired specifically for physics and chemistry classes. So we aren't able to offer a section of those courses this semester, but we're hoping for next semester. And those are the advantages. So any vacancy at the high school level, can you minimize your course offerings?
Ask a question again, maybe a budget specific one. I know we can't necessarily, maybe it's negotiations, hire adjuncts to touch something. If we, if we can't hire a teacher, but maybe we've got a chance to hire an adjunct, if we just do that, offer the class.
So we actually looked into that, and the difficult piece of hiring adjunct would be through, say, the community college system. We can make it or start to find an adjunct faculty to build the courses. The staffing issue is across the board on all levels, unfortunately.
If we're missing case managers at each level, looking at, um, teachers, special ed, high school. I'm just looking, what are the ratios? Or what if, you might not have it now, not ratios, but like, did it add ten kid, like, is it?
Graduation points, it's a case load.
And what do we want it to be?
Well.
Wow, that's profound.
I don't have that magic number.
No, I just wonder, like, what are we shooting for, like, to decide? You know what I mean?
Yeah, it goes back to the question around, will, will we decide to put a teaching position and a career sales?
If everybody was, was specialized teachers, they're also teaching, right? They're not just, I just want to be clear, it's not like they're doing the job as case management, right?
Providing direct instruction.
Providing direct instruction, so, um, I guess I'm just trying to figure out. So we're obviously providing them, so what would their case be?
Maybe we're very, 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 well.
Tell me less.
We love you. I have that analysis, I should put it aside, so if the, if, if this case was.
Right.
So, with that, different individuals, how much they're coming, their work. Even though the. And currently, we're doing the eighty-minute class schedule. Again, nobody's looking at, you can do fifty-five on fifty-minute class schedules, which makes it that students can have five classes in a semester and do ten in a year, accumulating more credits that way. Yeah, but if you make it five or six classes in a day, which then can allow some teachers to have a period that they're free to catch up on their work. I think that's a good incentive for people coming in to teach. When they look at a schedule that's pretty tight with only four classes, that limits their time, that they can catch up on their workload. I know there's teachers that are extremely backed up on their reporting of their, you know, what the students are doing, and it hasn't been kept up with as much as it should be. And that is because I think it's a lot, that they're constantly busy while they're here. And if we had a five or six class schedule, you could allow some of them to have a pre- previous, perhaps a day or two, that they can catch up on their work, and it probably makes the job more attractive than being tied in a more class schedule. And then the students are allowing to accumulate more credits, but then they just eliminate.
Yeah, I know you brought that up a couple times, I grow, I'm just trying to, trying to bring it back to what's the budget impact? So, I'm having a hard time trying to understand whether there would be a budget savings or a cost increase by looking at the bell schedule.
Well, one of the things that we talked about earlier, we have people going to other places, and they're having to leave during classes, during the classes, okay? Uh, and will come back during class, and some of them are struggling to class, and so probably in Hewitt, in, in their outside classes, so I'm, I wonder if they're actually struggling also in the class of them even earlier, coming in too late. And then, uh, are we actually getting our benefits by having a teacher, teach only between the time that everybody's present in the classroom? We're having everybody in there for eighty minutes, but what has been instructed is probably only forty-five minutes or fifty minutes, because the teacher expects people to come later, or even earlier. I mean, are we wasting time there in, when somebody else is taking five classes and wants to master five minutes and accumulating more credits, so that way they're more free and they're lucky, they're teenagers, maybe graduating even earlier.
Yeah, I'm still just trying to figure out what the budget impact is and change the bell schedule. Because what you're basically, the way I'm interpreting your question is that we would have, we would be creating additional blocks during the day. And for our Hewitt students, we would, we would basically create a study hall period prior to them being able to go to Hewitt, and then they come back into a study hall.
Yeah.
So, there isn't any direct instruction. You're not, you're not increasing the course offerings by doing that, nor am I seeing a budget impact in any way whatsoever with the bell schedule, because when you talk about monies, you're talking about staffing, so I don't understand, just help me try to understand.
Well, that's part of hiring, hiring individuals, right? Just currently, a teacher comes in, I'm sure we go over how your schedule is in your schedule, what they're going to require, you're going to be required to do, and if they're looking at it, they're looking at what their days, you know, be like. But if you have a teacher that teaches maybe two classes out of a six, six, uh, or three classes in a, out of a six, uh, hour, in a six-class schedule, they may not have three or two class sections that are free that can actually catch up on the work. With currently, they might only have one class, one eighty minutes, that they may have to catch up on the work.
So you're looking at this as an opportunity to help with retention?
Yeah, retention, and then the students gain more credit also. The, the, what I'm looking at is students here paying and credits so they can, um, go to Hewitt or get more credits or wait a month to buy and move on, or, and also so that if we're paying tuition to other rotations, that we're looking at they actually succeed, and we minimize how many are failing, because they're struggling in both rotations.
So, I think there are two things. One, the number of, um, for high school, actually, for everybody, the, the union contract specifies they get one period. Which is the eighty, and so that's a whole union thing too. So if we, the other thing is, I wouldn't want to pay for a teacher to only teach three periods out of a six-period day or, or, because we're paying him seventy-two thousand, give or take. And then the other thing is, we short, which I think we can look at, but for budget, it wouldn't, the reason, my understanding, and currently those who have more experience, but those who are on a longer schedule, like if you do the eighty blocks for, um, an eight-day or a day or whatever it's called, that's a whole year class. So the class is only forty-five minutes, but it's a whole year.
Yeah, we're worried about that.
No, I know, but if you, if you reduce the eighty minutes, they don't, and offer more, they have to take the class longer. So it's not like they, it's not like we can do forty-five minutes in one semester and count it as doing a whole credit.
So, it might be a little digger deeper, Kevin, seeing this taught in eighty minutes, tying it back to the budget.
Right, so I'm just saying, I'm not sure if, we, we agreed to talk about it, we put it on the horizon. So it is on the horizon of a discussion, but I'm not sure how it impacts the budget specifically. Like, are you proposing we cut a position and then, but then how, what would it look like?
Well, Sean had a spin on this, picking up on what Edward said or vice versa. Do you remember your thought last time we talked? You were asking that question.
Right, I got it.
That would have a budgetary impact, and I wouldn't answer that.
Right. But we just don't know what the budget impact is.
Yeah.
So, I don't, I don't know what you're proposing.
Well, then, what I was just trying to give to was that if you open it up so that there's more classes, then you can restructure, if you're going to be teaching a lot in those times. And, yeah, it could be a potential that maybe they don't need all the teachers that you currently have, but you don't have a teacher trying to create you a fee for their minutes, and we're literally spending money on some time that we're not getting the benefit of. And if the current, if you're going to Hewitt, the tuition is two hundred and eighty, something for next year, and if you don't have those people graduating, you want what we're paying for, we're literally wasting the money.
I think the discussion with that, I just don't think there's a budget impact. I think it's more about, we need to look at block scheduling, how it works, are there gals, contracts? Are there options for more course offerings, how can we do that? I just don't think there's a budget impact plus or minus.
I go, I go back and, and just words. My question to the board is, if these are sufficiently, if you put them one best, if you want this funding, but it's a candidate, it's coming here, it's more, or, I don't know, we're studying to have them report when you're like, fuck, or maybe it's already, I don't know. But if you're wanting the budget, um, you want this funding, you're going to investigate this or not. I don't mean just this, I mean, the other question on how you measure success. And I, I know what Michael thinks was, was pretty good, if I can talk on this, but. If we cross that line to investigate block scheduling, it'll all be on the internal.
After, I have another question. Clarify at the middle school level. Of, of course, teachers are discipline-specific, like, are they specific?
Or seventh grade grades specifically, but also we have that, those, those, the specific content area, fifth, sixth, seventh grade. They have been certified, when you come to seventh grade.
So you have five teachers, what are the five content areas?
You have math, language arts, science, social studies, you have all content areas.
So that's.
Yeah, so you also have your math lab teachers, as well as language arts lab, as your intervention blocks, which is your better.
But there's four discipline areas.
Right.
So what I found interesting is, like, in my son, in seventh grade, his math lab teacher, or his reading lab teacher, was his D L A teacher the following year. So they were able to kind of like assess where you can be coming into their class, which is kind of great. So it's not like individual teachers for that, it's teachers that.
I just, I just, I thought there are four disciplines, but there's five grade levels. There's five teachers in each grade level. I'm trying to figure out how, uh, the syllabus should let.
But it's not five teachers in each grade level. Could the inter, are, aren't the interventions, the fifth and sixth and seventh and eighth, they share?
Just a couple of challenges, five.
They share, right?
I have a boring technical question, I'll do it in instructional anyway. For, uh, districts, um, I've been looking at the big ticket, obviously salary benefits numbers, and I assume that the benefits, as it rolls up, is an individualized bunch of, right? Who's on what land, how many people in part-time. The, the range, I mean, they run like ten percent of the salary benefits, the seven, four percent of salary benefits, which I assume that's.
Yep.
And then, um, if district is self-insured, right?
Yeah, we just, we reimburse, we don't pay it to.
Bob, anything you're seeing from your, I'll just start asking you.
Oh, I can, I'm just trying to figure out where we are, where.
Oh, I can, I'm just trying to figure out where we are with what Michael's proposing. Or we need maybe a decision to hold on, or we don't mind by mind, or we.
And bringing that in.
We have not made any adjustments to the proposed operating budget that was originally brought to this group. What we do know is that increase in the health insurance is based on what our health insurance provider came back to us after she told us ten percent, said fifteen percent is safe, so I would see that as an increase that is given, even though it's not hundred percent, because it could come in lower by November fifteenth. We want to stay hopeful, or it could go up to nineteen percent, we don't know at this point, but. So what I understand is from last meeting, you know, out of general consensus of what growth rate the budget came back with, is pretty bad for that sense of and it's like, I'm really, it comes to an accurate amount of insurance, where those rights can be up there. Then either this is going to be valued at seven or maybe four.
I mean, we can go based on what Michael, I mean, I, that's up to you all. I know if there are things you want to accept or reject, or do you want, how do you want to do this? Cause he hasn't made any changes to the.
The one, the only things that are given are detract changes, separation, reduction into longevity, it's on the potential of adjustments. Primex, short change there, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars. It did sound like there was kind of a certain number of students. And all the services would want that side of the problem regardless.
So I know we've talked a lot, a lot of stuff about, you know, the academic side of things. I think Sean has a valid question about what's happening with the, with learning lab at the, at the middle school. And I'd love to see, you know, what it, what it could look like. Without, I'm not advocating for it to be gone, but I'm kind of interested in what it would be. But is this, I mean, is this the form where we step out of academic and, like, I, I feel that we have too many too many club activities. I mean, is this, do we transition out of the academic stuff and start talking about that, or I don't, I don't know.
Well, is there, is there consensus on those two things that we're doing, we're talking about, it sounded like it's kind of like.
I don't have any consensus. I'm not ready to put out there, I want my fraction more of three years. That's my point.
So what you're saying, you're talking about that, is the presentation on the class?
No, the, well, I mean, I guess that that would be one of the, you know, the, the clubs and activities out of, I guess.
The appendix.
Yeah, we look at that list, yeah, the appendix.
Part of the collective bargaining agreement?
So the individual clubs and activities is part of the.
Part of the CBA.
So that's, so the, the numbers of those clubs and activities would not be able to change?
The only ones that would be able to change would be any charters that were approved by the board. But now the ones that have already been approved by the board are part of the CBA. So those can't change. They'd have to go back into negotiations.
So. What we can talk about, if we change, say, our bottoms. Why don't we have the re-creation, why don't we open up the CBA?
So the stipulation in the CBA is that the board can add, and the board can be, collective bargaining agreement also said that the appendix speed committee had made recommendations to the board for changes, and then the board to approve it. The ones that have not been listed in the CBA, the charters that have been approved since the collective bargaining agreement, those would be on the table. But anything that's listed in the current collective bargaining agreement would not be.
So anything to be approved, like that we put in the budget last year?
That's the point. So it's just for purposes of conversation, if there's a dozen clubs that don't have any attendees, and again, just for purposes of conversation.
So that's what we look at, is the appendix speed committee.
Correct.
And we have suspended some of the clubs, because there are no one, no one's participating. So we've suspended the club, but we can't remove it from appendix speed.
Well, we have a budget in the board.
We have suspended it, board's given suspended. But the following year, if they get the number of kids, we would have to fund it and pay for it, because it's part of the CBA.
So removing completely out of NXP is something that would need to be negotiated, the next round of negotiations, which is two years.
Bob?
Well, thank teachers.
Yeah, that's a bit ridiculous, but okay, it is what it is.
So speaking of Bob, if you're something tracking, we asked her the facts, so there's some decisions.
Yes, so the twelve, just going back to twelve, we're talking about it on twelve. Other?
So would the same thing be for athletics as well? If someone thought that there's too many athletic offerings?
Athletics are a part of appendix speed as well.
Positions.
The, what we paid for for coaches and the, yeah.
And the rate.
I guess I'm not ready for any voting on that. I'm interested in what health insurance comes back at, what the mall budget is, and how the revenue is played into this. Because again, I don't know, whether it's a one point six nine increase or point nine three increase. Probably doesn't impact the value of three hundred dollars, three hundred thousand dollars. About one or two hundred thirty, but I still think it's important that we know what this budget does to the product.
And that's even assuming I can do any tax rate projections, depending on when the county gets their information to DRA. I checked today, and DRA still doesn't have the information as of tax rates.
But just makes it hard to say how comfortable it is.
Right.
I want it as flat as possible, but maybe it doesn't impact on my question.
Yeah, you told us this date before, but what is the date that we will know about the health insurance?
So they tell us by November fifteenth is their deadline. But I'm assuming it's going to be by November eighth, because after we have the meeting on Friday, Lisa, who you had as the executive director of the school care, will go back. She generally works all weekend to try to get the rates out to people as soon as possible. So she usually sits between Wednesday and Friday, the week after the meeting. Um, but guaranteeing we will not have any revenue numbers until November fifteenth. They do not release those early.
So do we have questions, suggestions, or something for Michael to do?
I have a question. What is the current to the CBA, what is the current limit that teachers can, classes that teachers can teach?
So.
You said there was a limit on each class.
So it depends on the level. So the high, high school's three.
Classes are three classes.
They can teach three classes out of four.
Three time periods or three courses?
So it is block scheduling, so if the block is, they have the mini blocks, they can teach that block. But it's three blocks out of four.
So it's not.
Seventy-five percent.
Right.
Well, is it seventy-five percent, or?
It's, it's three blocks out of four. And some of the blocks are what they call skinny blocks. So instead of a ninety-minute block, it's forty-five. So if they're teaching, they're actually teaching two different minis in that block, but it's three blocks.
So I think where you're going, if you, and again, this isn't, this isn't, well, I guess it could be budget related. If you were on a seven period a day, and they had one per period a day, they'd be teaching eighty-five.
Why don't we, people understand one of the losses that's so bad, sir?
Yes, right.
Take that away of.
Well, yeah, I don't think anyone's proposing to take away. It's just a matter of eighteen minutes or a hundred of the other.
So if we went to a different type of schedule, would that open this up to having to readjust collective bargaining?
Yes, you have to reopen negotiations.
We could say we're only teaching six of eight, or.
That's how the negotiations go.
Is that coming up, right? Two years.
Two years.
So anything else from our goal to investigate, suggestions, things we want to clear the code? I'm hearing the one of the revenue numbers, I'm hearing the health insurance numbers, I'm hearing want document.
Thanks, I'm hoping so, it'll depend on, on get the information for class sizes. At this point, all we can do is be able to guess, guess exactly, if we want, something to, you know, to explore, something different.
Good, and this, but aren't some capital projects being done for the Chinese process?
Yeah.
Where is this?
Yeah. Yeah.
I think it's a ninety-four thousand dollars for capital.
That's probably the number one. So having that for a couple of years now, this one, I would say, you asked me to assess where this process stands, that's why my new lead idea is that we were presented with as possible level funded budget, I think it's yet in the world of the CBA of the cost increase. There are some known and some estimated cost increases, and then there are some options in front of the board that would bring it back down to that point. And that feels like a good place to be right now. And whether you exercise those options or not, it depends a lot on the information that's not going to come through once we're done with this. So that, that, that's a fair assessment, I feel like it is. And then looking at the, and I don't know that I ask enough to ask if there are other options out there or other things, but I assume that I can make that a little period of struggle to come up with the options.
Your old pad at this point, at this point. Don't we do this every year? Ask you to, ask you to come back with things, but don't we do this every year?
Yeah. But I'd, I agree with Bob's assessment of the process at this point. Feel that you're not, it is as effective as you possibly can. And once you receive that personal information, that's everything I want to do. I don't know, but I'm hoping that you have your health insurance, our health insurance rate is five to twelve, for NXP. But I don't see us digging into a lot of budget discussion in under twelve, that's the one we tend to lie away. Well, without that information, and without any additional suggestions on the board at this point, it seems like if someone would stand still, the budget doesn't process.
Since we know that we won't have the rest of the information that we're asking for until after the Q, does it make sense to have budget discussions a little more?
I don't know. I believe that is our meeting, yeah, second.
We have the nineteen, we have the one sentence. We have the ledger.
Maybe we can adjust the things?
Decision to make, but I don't know.
But it's gonna be hard though, if you don't have the information.
That's what we, so, no, we. Anything else on budget?
Just to confirm that we wouldn't be asking our budget advisory members to meet and attend this group better from the top.
Correct, unless we'll be having a lot of this, I'm expecting to have a budget impact, so that's your other. Then, yeah, yeah, right?
Only things on.
Right, like to hear the discussion. So just a little bit learning on the budget, why this, why this could be an important. Okay, anything else on budget? Okay. Public communication and correspondence. I know we're all on the table, but if you wanted to change out of the budget, you have to. Okay, and um the board doesn't know this, but we need to go to non-holdup session. And just a word, a few minutes. If I can have a motion.